Please rise to the plaid.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trakas?
Present.
Councilmember Harder? Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
I move for approval of the Journal at the meeting of January 30th, 2018.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Journal is approved. We have no bid opening, so we'll move Communications.
Mr. Chair, we'll have the record reflected. Councilman Harder joined the meeting.
We'll note that Councilman Harder is here.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road and bridge matters this evening, so we'll move to other communications. Under Other Communications, item number one.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number two?
Drop from the agenda, and that will be the order.
Item number three?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number four, First District?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five, Sixth District?
Receive, file, and refer to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Planning, and to the county council.
So ordered.
Item number six, all districts?
Receive and file, same motion through item number nine.
Item number 10, Sixth District?
Receive, file, and change of benching. Officer be approved as requested. I'm sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
Item number 11, all districts?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion, all the way through item number 21, and that will be the order.
Item number 22, Third District? Receive, file, and hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number 23, Third District?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Third District.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was mine. I apologize.
Ditto. Same motion.
So ordered.
I just was speaking for it.
Item number 24, Fifth District?
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 25, Sixth District?
Are you sure? Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 26, Sixth District?
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number 27, Seventh District?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 28, Seventh District?
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 29, Third District? Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number 30, Sixth District?
Receive, file, and the county council... No, hang on a minute. That's true. Give me a minute. Mr. Chairman, this seems to me to be something more appropriately placed for resolution.
I think you have to ask for it to be drafted.
All right, then I will do that. Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, but as I understand it, it's already been done.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, First District?
Receive and file.
So ordered. Reported County Executive?
Nothing this evening.
For special committees?
Oh, please hold.
So ordered. Public forum.
We have seven speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. When your name is called, please approach the podium and give your name and address for the record. Please try to keep your comments to three minutes. First speaker?
First speaker this evening is Jeanne Fitzgerald.
Good evening. My name is Jeanne Fitzgerald, and I have worked for St. Louis County Justice Services for over 20 years. The first 10 years of my career were spent as a Corrections Officer One, and I was proudly promoted to Corrections Case Manager in January of 2008. I currently work on the seventh floor of the Justice Center, and I have up to 288 maximum security inmates on my caseload. With this 3% Proposition P addition to pay that we just received, I gained an additional 66 cents per hour for a grand total of an extra $26.40 per week. Had I taken a voluntary demotion back to Corrections Officer One, I would have received a raise of $4.84 per hour, which would have been additional $193 a week. How on earth does it make sense that I have to take a demotion in order to make more money? When I questioned the Director and the Superintendents regarding this, I voiced that it was a slap in the face that there was a portion of us merely getting a 3% addition to pay. I was told that others in the county would be grateful to get a 3%. My issue stems from the fact that all but 55 of this Justice Services family received anywhere from a 10% to 22% raise. How are some of us arbitrarily selected to only receive a 3%, and why was it deemed that the years of service for us, the 55, didn't account for anything? My 20 years of dedicated employment here means nothing? Justice Services policy and procedures apply to all of us that work here. Per Policy 101, in accordance with the St. Louis County Government Charter, the Department of Justice Services is to serve and protect the community by providing custody, supervision, and guidance to those persons who are mandated to our jurisdiction. And we recognize and accept our mission to provide the following: a safe, secure, and humane environment for the community, staff, and inmates; an environment where the staff, inmates, and visitors are free from physical, emotional, or psychological abuses or danger; an environment that encourages each inmate to better themselves physically, vocationally, socially, and academically while incarcerated; an environment that develops and supports staff through constructive supervision and leadership; an environment that fosters a well-trained staff and employs a professional, consistent, and creative approach to direct supervision management. This approach will be maintained through progressive training, education, and promotional opportunities for Justice Services staff. Part of the department's mission is to return inmates to the community who have been given the opportunity to improve their behavior and lifestyle. We, the entire Justice Services family, adhere to this mission statement. Everyone here matters and has a specific duty in the success of this mission statement. Everyone's years of dedication and service matters equally. Our administration's arbitrary and selective determination of who is more deserving is both demoralizing and has proceeded to cause dissension. We, the 55, ask that we all be awarded the same 10% raise with the additional increments for years of service. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Johnny Little.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We talked last week about having... going back to the table and looking at the budget so that we can kind of maybe look at how we can correct some of those injustices. Are we still going to do that?
There are... There were a couple of meetings. I think there was one today from some of the staff.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Hold on.
Okay.
Those... And I wasn't at those meetings, but were those for the nurses, for the...
We started with the nurses, that's right.
But this is not the nurses.
I don't believe the nurses were part of the first meeting.
First meeting, yeah.
It was my staff and some council staff.
So, does there have been meetings about the Justice... About the 55?
I believe that we are talking about having some meetings, but I don't think they've been scheduled yet.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Next speaker, Johnny Little.
Good evening. My name is Johnny Little, owner of E-Little Communications Group. We are a strategic communications firm specializing in public relations, marketing, and advertising. Since 2007, E-Little Communications Group has worked as the public relations firm of record for Normity, Jennings, Riverview Gardens School Districts, North County Incorporated, Provident Counseling, and a host of other clients. Most notably, E-Little Communications Group provided public relations services to the city of Ferguson from November of 2014 until nearly July of 2017. As a lifelong North County supporter, I'm here to share with you my displeasure of an article published in the St. Louis Post-Dispatch on Monday, February 5th, 2018, entitled "Business: Link to Stinger Contributor Won a Marketing Contract, But There's Little to Show For It." Imagine my displeasure when Post-Dispatch reporter Jacob Barker contacted me to ask if I remember bidding on a marketing contract for the St. Louis County Port Authority. My answer was yes. Mr. Barker went on to ask whether I was aware that my bid was nearly $14,000 cheaper than the waiting bidder. I was shocked. And the marketing contract was awarded to Partner Creative, a company who registered its name a year before it was awarded the contract. The article quoted Sheila Sweeney, CEO of the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership, as stating, "She recommended Partner Creative over E-Little Communication Group because the owner, John Rallo, had longstanding ties with Montel Williams, a former talk show host whose show was canceled in 2008." What's even more disturbing was that my firm did not receive an interview for the contract. Sheila Sweeney and her team chose Partner Creative without having one conversation with me. County Council, the article states my bid was for $86,400,000. Sheila Sweeney signed a final contract for $130,000. Taxpayers paid nearly $44,000 more for this contract. This contract was not awarded to a business with the track record of working in St. Louis County. The contract was awarded to a business because of political connections. The competitive bidding laws in Missouri are designed to protect against such business. Council members, I ask for a thorough review of your competitive bidding policies and procedures. Who is guarding the hen house? Why did I and all other St. Louis County taxpayers pay more than $40,000 to a firm that was created on the eve of the contract award instead of establishing ongoing professional companies who deliver on time and under budget? And finally, I am asking County Executive Steve Stinger to explain how this has happened under your watch. Once again, I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak with you concerning this matter.
Thank you, Johnny.
Next speaker is Garrett Mees.
Sorry, missed you last week, Steve. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here once again to address the violate... Oh, my name. Garrett Mees. I live at 3715 Rich Avenue. I'm the chairman of the LeMay Neighborhood Association, and I'm here once again to address the violations of County Ordinances 1003.167 and 716.225. It is my understanding that the county is investigating simple pleasures inventory sizes as it relates to adult novelties versus tobacco products, possibly in an attempt to disqualify their status as an adult business under the 10% displayed as definition, and allow them to continue to operate adjacent to school property, a county park, and residential property in violation of County Ordinance 1003.167. That is, in fact, a question, not an assertion. I will remind you again that since Section 602.360 defines tobacco products, including papers, pipes, and liquids, going on to define electronic smoking devices such as e-cigarettes and hookah, including any component, part, or accessory of such device, whether it are sold separately or included, any substance intended to be aerosolized, vaporized during the use of the device. But Section 716.225, Sale of Tobacco Products Near School, reads, "It shall be unlawful to sell or offer for sale within 300 feet of any school building any tobacco product." As the building sits directly adjacent to the school property line and within 60 feet from the school building, this clearly disqualifies any inventory for this side of their business to be sold at that location. Thus, the remaining inventory consisting of adult novelties far exceeds 10%, classifying them as an adult-oriented business and also disqualifies them from operating at this location. I am once again asking that this business be vacated immediately as the facts are in. Clearly, someone made a mistake by allowing this. Do not compound it by allowing it to continue, as you are setting precedence for all future development in St. Louis County, including your own neighborhoods. I'm also here to offer suggestions to solution the very real problem that county government has with the uneven and unequal treatment of businesses throughout St. Louis County. Planning and zoning has a pretty rigorous filter process that many businesses get caught through and go through spending thousands of dollars returning property to former use state just to apply for a zoning change, even though they had no intent to use the changes they were required to make. Yet others fly through Public Works with a rubber stamp and several variations in between. Although this problem existed well before any of you took your seat behind this bench, you have the opportunity to make changes to this process that can both streamline and instill best practices into all departments and equally prevent this type of thing from ever happening again in the future. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker is Allison Burgess.
Allison Burgess, 8 Terry Hill Lane, 63131. Three years ago, St. Louis County established a Citizens Oversight Board for County Animal Control, and I have been serving on that advisory board since. The board has dwindled in part due to several resignations, three of which were out of frustration. That frustration which I share is due to county management largely ignoring the advice, recommendations, research, and expertise on the board. I also serve as a citizen volunteer walking dogs at the pound. The county executive has just recently taken public pride in a new program director, a culture shift, and greatly reducing euthanasia, not a complex decision to make and one that could have been made years ago. However, this was done with no plan or infrastructure to support going no-kill, and now the dogs are being left there lack exercise, socialization, and a humane existence. So in effect, we have gone from high-kill to no-kill to slow-kill. Regardless of what you see on TV, the dogs are going crazy. Some are depressed and shutting down. I know firsthand walking dogs there is a very challenging and sometimes dangerous task because the dogs are hysterical to get out. I sometimes have to shove them back into their cages. What the television stories do not show are dogs at the pound are routinely not being walked outside and left to languish in their cages, sometimes for days at a time. Many are there on the adoption floor still intact, which only increases the stress and tension among the dogs. The pound, which used to have two veterinarians on staff, now has none. There is a dire shortage of staff in general, as 13 staff members have quit since the current program manager started. Reports of racist remarks have been made, and morale is at an all-time low. Word is spreading quickly that County ACC is not a good place to work. Poor staffing decisions are leading to inadequate response during emergencies. Over the New Year's holiday, during an extreme cold weather emergency, only one animal control officer was on duty. Citizens were told their reports of dogs left outdoors in single-digit temperatures were not addressed. What is also disturbing is that many of these issues mirror the complaints made about the current program manager in her previous position. What the county executive should have done in his recent television spots is to thank all the volunteers who are saving county money and all the rescues who are doing their best to get their animals out of CACC, particularly staffers Mary Ann Willis on rescues and Lisa Langonecker volunteers. Both of these employees are shining stars and outstanding assets to the county. Assured of transparency in county government, a group of us suggested that we hire a qualified independent auditor to analyze the problems at CACC. This was denied. A partnership was proposed by a nonprofit organization who could help raise money for the pound. This was also denied. Other efforts to donate items to the pound have been rejected. Suggesting highly qualified individuals for empty places on the advisory board were also dismissed. Despite the TV stories, I feel there is an overall lack of commitment to moving toward an open, transparent, community, and volunteer-based effort to alleviate the suffering of counties' animals.
That's 20 minutes, Mr. Chair.
I ask the county council to help correct this situation and stop wasting taxpayers' money. The council should consider privatizing to CACC, just as St. Louis City has done and what several municipal pounds are doing across the country. I am happy to meet with anyone and explain what I feel is needed to correct our current problems and move forward. Thank you very much.
Yes.
I just wanted Allison to know, we are planning to have a hearing, right, regarding the animal shelter, and so we can contact you and let you know.
Thank you.
Be there. Thank you.
Next speaker is Lisa Wellman.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Wellman. I have been a registered nurse with Corrections Medicine for six years. I am here to speak on Proposition P. We are very grateful for your support two weeks ago. When we spoke, and we remain hopeful this situation will get resolved. One of the reasons we are here again tonight is that we were advised by an assistant of one of your council members that the Fraternal Order of Police have been contacting every council member and stating their opposition to Corrections Medicine receiving Proposition P money. This is very disheartening, as we are doing everything in our power to have a positive working relationship with the police officers, including the kaizen meetings, to make the intake process as efficient as possible so they can return to the streets. The jail cannot run without Corrections Medicine. In 2017, 24,168 people were booked into the Justice Center. Imagine if my department didn't exist, and every one of them had to go to the hospital to be cleared for acceptance into the jail. Assuming each inmate could get in and out of the ER in three hours, which I think we all know is unlikely, that would result in over 72,000 hours a year that the police would be off the street waiting for inmates' medical clearance. That's about 34 full-time jobs. Not only would the police be tied up for thousands of hours, imagine the cost. The average ER bill in Missouri is $1,300. Assuming the inmates are in average health, which is unlikely, given the physical toll of violent lifestyles and substance abuse, it would cost at least $31 million for county taxpayers to foot the bill. $31 million. I don't pretend to understand how politics work, and I understand this is an election year, but for those opposed to giving us Prop P funds, I'd like to say this. My department wholeheartedly supported Prop P from day one. When it came out, the general assumption by most was that this money was meant for police only. We all supported it because we support the police. We work hand-in-hand with them. I don't know who actually wrote Prop P, but that wording did not state that the funds were for the police only. It stated that it was for police and public safety officers. Corrections Medicine didn't write Prop P or decide to include public safety officers. St. Louis County did. My coworkers and I would not be coming here week after week if the bill hadn't included us, but it does. We are public safety officers. We would not be here if we weren't the only employees in the entire Justice Center building to be left out of the pay increase. We would not be here if those funds were given to the entire staff of the prosecuting attorney's office and not us. For example, a 16% pay increase, just an example, for Corrections Medicine...
That's 3 minutes, Mr. Chair.
Would result in less than 1% of the total amount of Prop P funds. Strongly consider Corrections Medicine to be included in Prop P funds.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Vicki Reynolds.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Reynolds. I've been a registered nurse with the Department of Corrections for four years. I was asked to speak tonight by my fellow coworkers regarding the Proposition P funds. Corrections Medicine, as Lisa said, is the only department in the Buzz Westfall Justice Center that did not receive a raise. Due to our difficult position, poor staffing, and continually being asked to work short and assume more duties, new nurses often do not stay very long. In part, this is because the salary is unfair. All RNs are hired at $26.19 an hour. It does not make a difference if they have been an RN for two years or 25 years, such as myself. Each position I have held as a nurse, bit by bit, my salary increased, to the point where my former job, I made $33 an hour. Only when I came to Buzz Westfall was I told that the salary is $26.19 an hour, non-negotiable, and yes, oh yes, there are no raises, even in spite of near-perfect evaluations year after year. I heard a police officer's wife on the TV in December complaining that her husband had several years more experience than his coworker, yet they made the same salary. This is wrong for police officers, and it's wrong for us. In fact, it's wrong for anyone. In November of 2017, all Department of Public Health employees were asked to complete a Health Equity and Diversity Self-Study Module. It was mandatory to complete two studies by the end of January 2018. I chose a self-study module on sexism in America. I read Lean In by author, activist, and Chief Operating Officer of Facebook, Sheryl Sandberg. In this book, I learned that men still outearn women. For every $1 a man makes, a woman still makes 77 cents. In light of this, I wonder why the male-dominated profession in St. Louis County all received larger raises from the Prop P funds. Police, correctioned officers, and prosecutors, male-dominated fields, but the female-dominated professions, such as nurses, social workers, clerical staff, and medical assistants, receive little or no raise. Most of us women have been head of household or breadwinner for our families, including myself. I have been a person in that position since 1990. Currently, my 69-year-old husband is retired and receives Social Security chucks. Guess what? He got a $25 raise this year from Social Security. $25 a month. I will be 60 in two months, and I hope to retire soon, and I hope to enjoy years with him, and I hope I can afford to. In closing, I ask what needs to happen for us is to receive an equal share of the Proposition P funds that we, as public safety officers, are entitled to. Thank you.
Thanks.
Final speaker this evening is Leanne Fritzl.
Good evening. Leanne Fritzl, 730 Leland, University City. And speaking tonight as a taxpayer and your constituent, I am an animal welfare advocate and volunteer at St. Louis County Animal Control. Last week, I mentioned numerous concerns many of us have with St. Louis County Animal Control, including the severe staff shortage and inability or unwillingness to hire in-house vets rather than contract out vet services. We used to have two vets and two vet techs on staff. We now have one vet tech. Why have 13 staff left since early September? Again, none were fired, and as I stated last week, the new director has done away with light duty, and I don't believe that is legal. And no vets are willing to work there now for almost five months. Interviews were held October 12, and the new director stated one person didn't show up, yet when I asked for clarification, I wasn't provided any answer. At advisory board meetings in November and December, I pushed for an answer why there are no vets, and was told there is a vet shortage in St. Louis. However, as I stated last week, that is news to me and many of us in the local animal welfare community. And when I contacted the Missouri Vet Board and Missouri Vet Association last week, both stated they were not aware of any vet shortage in the area. It appears this vet shortage excuse is just that. So again, why do no vets want to work at St. Louis County Animal Control? And why are there so many vacant positions? Are they not seeking to fill the positions, or are people not applying? In this particular county, in this particular time, it is important someone in authority have racial sensitivity. Could it be word has gotten out that this is not a racially sensitive environment? Could it be licensed vets are concerned about their reputation and jeopardizing their licenses? What is not in dispute is there are not enough people to humanely care for the animals. Why? We can't solve the problem without figuring out what it is. If there really is a 97% save rate, then people should be beating down the doors... If there really is a ninety-seven percent save rate, then people should be beating down the door to work there. The salaries are competitive, the benefits are great. Why are there so many open positions and especially no vets on staff? There are a lot of unanswered questions, and we can't solve the problems if we don't know what is causing them. I'm requesting that an independent audit by a shelter expert be completed to determine what the problems are and how to address them. Thank you.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
That concludes our public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number seventeen, introduced by Councilmember Tracus. An ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and district maps by changing the boundaries of the C-two shopping district and the CA Plan Commercial District and approving the application and preliminary plans as amended for the development of the CA Plan Commercial District of attractive land subject to conditions. PC forty-three dash seventeen, Lita Ventures Two LLC. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Perfection of bills.
Bill number three oh five, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number three oh five will be held.
Bill number three oh seven, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold for now.
Bill number three oh seven will be held.
Bill number three fifty, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold on the order of business.
Three fifty will be held.
Bill number two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Please hold, Bill number two. Bill number two is held.
Bill number nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to, um, perfect Bill number, Bill number nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Bill number nine is perfected.
Bill number eleven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number eleven is perfected.
Bill number twelve, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to hold Bill number twelve. Bill twelve is held.
Bill number sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number sixteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number sixteen is perfected.
Final passage, Mr. Chair?
Yes, final passage.
Bill number three fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Um, please hold, Bill number three fifty-three, and three fifty-three is held.
Bill number thirteen, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill number thirteen.
Second.
Go call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number thirteen, there are seven ayes.
Bill number thirteen is finally passed.
Bill number fourteen, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of number fourteen, please.
Second.
Go call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number fourteen, there are seven ayes.
Bill number fourteen is finally passed.
Bill number fifteen, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number fifteen, please.
Second.
Go call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number fifteen, there are seven ayes.
Bill number fifteen is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for the adoption of resolution number one, please.
Second.
Go call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I'll move for adoption. I was gonna have you read it, but it's kind of long, Jen, so go ahead.
I can read it.
Read it, go ahead.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Erby. Resolution, whereas the Breakfast Club Incorporated, BCI, was founded in January nineteen seven, nineteen ninety-seven when three breast cancer survivors met over breakfast with a woman who had just received a diagnosis of breast cancer to discuss options of care and coping mechanisms. And at the end of this meeting, the woman asked if the three could meet with her again the following month. And whereas, within six months of that first meeting, the group had grown to ten women. By nineteen ninety-nine, the Breakfast Club Incorporated. And by August two thousand, BCI became a non-profit tax-exempt organization in order to better serve the community. And whereas, BCI now has a nine-member board of directors that oversees its programs and has over two hundred members, including Breakfast Club Brothers and Breakfast Club Kids Groups. And whereas, BCI's mission is to increase the rate of mammography screening, clinical breast exams, and breast self-awareness among low-income, uninsured, and underinsured North St. Louis City and North St. Louis County African-American women through education, awareness, resources, and support. And whereas, BCI fulfills its mission through comprehensive programs and services that include breast health, nutrition, and healthy lifestyle education, providing bras, prostheses, and accessible mammograms to women who could not otherwise afford them, holding monthly support group meetings for survivors, and semi-annual support group meetings for children slash grandchildren of survivors, and for adult males impacted by the breast cancer diagnosis of the women in their lives, an educational program for incarcerated age-appropriate women at a correctional facility in the St. Louis area, providing comfort kits for women undergoing chemotherapy or radiation therapy, and by hosting events such as the annual BCI Breast Health Educational Seminar and the annual Survivors' Holiday Celebration and Seminar. And whereas, when a small, dedicated group of women identify a need in our community and pool their energy and resources to address that need in a significant and effective manner, it is appropriate to pause and take notice of their accomplishments now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows, Section one. The County Council congratulates the Breakfast Club, Inc., on the occasion of the twentieth anniversary of its founding, which will be celebrated on February tenth, two thousand and eighteen, at the Shining Star Jazz Brunch.
Thank you, Jen. I congratulate the Breakfast Club. Uh, I move for adoption of resolution number two.
Second. Go call.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page?
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number two, there are seven ayes.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair, item number one.
Now, please hold on the order of business, same motion through, item number three, and that will be the order.
And moving on to new business, Mr. Chair, we have two prepared orders this evening.
I move to drop order number one.
Order number one will be dropped.
And I move to adopt order number two.
All in favor, adoption order number two. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, order number two is adopted. Any comments by any council members before adjournment?
This is a matter of business, and I'll be glad to second resolution two. Or, uh, hard I didn't hear, do we need an order for second?
We'll record you as a second, if there were none.
I didn't hear one.
Thanks.
Glad. But I didn't hear one.
Thank you. Any other comments, council members?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries for adjournment. Thank you.